All right, let's call this meeting open at 8:01 PM. Adoption of the agenda, I move that the agenda be adopted as presented, seconded by Councilor Levert. Any additions? None? Fine, thank you then. Declarations of peculiar interests? None. Delegations and presentations? Presentation by the Rockland Optimists Club regarding a request for a variance to the sign ballot. You're not here for no reason at all, are you gentlemen? No, Mr. Mayor, we're here for a precise reason. My name is Robert LePont, I'm the treasurer of the Rockland Optimists Club. Denis Bayancool, the chairperson, president of the Optimists Club is also with me. We've sent a letter to the City of Clarence in Rockland to ask permission to put up signage that announces an active Optimists Club here in Rockland and to let it be known that the city of Rockland welcomes newly arrived individuals, a whole lot of newly arrived individuals. You already have documents with regard to this. I won't list the projects that we've been involved in during the course of previous years for the city of Clarence in Rockland, but all we've done up to now was for the benefit of youngsters. Now, we were made up of 45 volunteers, we've been in existence for the past 45 years. Now, 45 years ago, and I wasn't there then, but spent then between $15,000 to $20,000 per year to help youngsters, Francophone youngsters, here in Clarence and Rockland. Now, 45 volunteers, like myself, are growing older, so we need new blood, so if we could, through advertisement, let people be aware that there's an Optimists Club, we could make use of this method to recruit new members. We might put up a signage at the entrance on Caron Street and the other one on Highway 17. Mr. Boucher told me that we could set up signage in those areas. Four-by-four signage. Advertising the Optimists Club, but Highway 17 is a county road, we'd need to obtain exemption from the United Counties of Prescott-Russell. Well, upon entering the city of Clarence in Rockland, Mr. Mayor, there is a sort of like a small part of that area that belongs to the city of Clarence in Rockland, and the other one would be located on the right-hand side upon leaving the city of Clarence in Rockland. If you were to put it on the left-hand side, there's a steep slope leading downward. So that's about it. I'm sorry. Now, your intention is to obtain your recruits, right? That's right. The sign could also advertise major events sponsored by the club, our lobster supper that's forthcoming, we could advertise the club's activities there. Do you foresee advertising solely in French? Well, the Optimists Club is a Francophone club, but the Optimists International Club, well, we belong to the Optimists International Club, but this particular sector is a Francophone sector, much like Saint Pascal and most of the surrounding areas. We are a Francophone community. Mrs. Coursoignan?
Well, how about saying, you know, we're recruiting and write down your phone number? Yes, we could do that. Our panel also has a smaller sub-panel where this might be borne out. You know, for anyone that sets foot in Rockland for the first time, they're looking for easy access to readily obtained information, if I might make use of that term, so that they will know where a doctor's office is located, where family services are located, and so on and so forth. So if you had a phone number and make people aware that, take a look at your sign, as to your real intent, yes, I could do so, you can put down your phone number. Well, I'm going to ask the president to set down his phone number, not mine. Councilor Zandt?
Well, this is a question for town administration. We do have a bylaw within the municipality that states that all signage has to be put up in both official languages. Does this provision apply for businesses or for any other event, other than business-related events? Now, I know that some people might view my comments a certain way, but we as a council represent all voters, Francophones, Anglophones, Chinese, people of Chinese descent, or whatever. It's important to recognize that the Optimists Club is a Francophone club, but in 2019, I do not know if a unilingual Anglophone club would operate. I imagine there would be a lot of stir around that, so I don't know if that applies to nonprofit groups. In my opinion, it does not apply to nonprofit groups, but town officials might be able to answer this. I think we'd have to take a look into this. Yes, we'd have to take a look into this. Yeah, I wouldn't like us, Mr. Mayor, to embark upon something that might go against the grain of the law. Let's not forget that 50% of our population is made up of Anglophones, you see, so half of our citizens are Anglophones, so I have a bit of difficulty with this. Well, is Lécois Saint Trinité advertised as Saint Trinity School? Well, Mrs. Willett?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to clarify that the signage bylaw has been modified in 2017 to reflect that everything ought to be posted bilingual, but 8.1 states that unilingual schools and churches shall be exempt from conforming to section 8. So only schools and churches have a right to post unilingually. That answers your question. Now, if there's an Anglophone group, what would happen? Are there organizations that operate only in English? Yes. And do they post their events in both languages? I don't think so. Well, I'd have to take a look at the signage. Mr. Bayancool, you'll need some reinforcements to shore up your comments. Well, Mr. Mayor, if you take a look at events that are advertised on Edward Street are posted in both languages, but the club is a Francophone institution, we function in French, my memory serves me right as far as your bylaw goes, but it was designed for commercial signage, but not nonprofit institutions that thrive within the city of Clarence and Rockland. The Eastern Ontario Optimists Association is Francophone. When we advertise public events, well, we've advertised an event recently in bilingual, in both French and English, because it catered to the population at large, but if other Anglophone clubs were to be advertising their events in both French and English, they'd probably come up with the same argument that we have tonight. Well, maybe we have to take a look into this. Let's just make sure that we don't post something in French only and then somebody would come up one day or another and say it should also be in English. Well, an institute might operate unilingually, depending on its statute, but the message has to be, the message given has to be given in both languages. But if the advertisement appearing on the signage is bilingual, does it meet the requirements? It does, but we don't ask them to change their name. The Club Optimist de Rockland remains the Club Optimist de Rockland, but if you're advertising spaghetti summer, put it up in bilingual. I know that English people are as much fond as French people of spaghetti, so what I'm worried is people's expectations. If we are to put up signage in both languages, it implies that everything that is, that occurs within a given event during a given night will have to occur in both French and English. We had a math contest earlier on this month, and it was hosted entirely in French, and people were okay with that. They involve their children in Francophone activities because they want their children or other individuals to become acquainted with the French language. And once they're, it does imply that people have a mandatory, otherwise it would imply that people have a mandatory duty to operate in both languages. Well, I would suggest that the nub of the problem is not bilingualism per se, the question that we wondered was the following: if we have the Optimists Club that puts up signage at those particular spots to encourage recruitment, and we're all in agreement that the Optimists Club is one of the organizations that is most involved in our community, but the question we pondered was the following: if the Optimists Club was to put up that signage, and next week, for example, Knights of Columbus want to put up signage, and then the baseball association wants to put up signage, and then the figure skating club wants to put up signage, and that we wind up on Caron Street with a list of different signage contents, then we might come up with a difficult situation, we might come up against a difficult situation. So we might be explained what the basic aim or goal behind this would be. Could we put up a signage reflecting community events rather than just catering to the Optimists Club per se? We're all in agreement that the Optimists Club, in effect, is one of the organizations that is most involved in the community and gives back to the community. So, strip malls, for example, often have signage put up, and all names are, you know, stacked one on top of the other. Well, yes, but you understand what I'm getting at, don't you? How many community-based organizations do we have within Clarence and Rockland, Mr. Boucher? Well, I don't know, but there's a point that was raised, however. The road that leads up to the Jean-Marc LaLonde Arena has signage put up there, and I believe there are seven or eight little signs that allow people to put up individual signage there. I'm not convinced that in this, in the sign that they're proposing to put up, I don't know if they'd be used completely or not with little sub-signage underneath it. But if we're taking a look at what we encounter from Ottawa going to Rockland on the side of the road on the right-hand side, there are five or six signs put up close to the wooded area, but they're very nice, it's very nice signage, I have no problem with that. Mr. Sima? Those new signs that have been put up leading to the entrance of individual villages, aren't there any sections that would allow the Optimists Club to advertise their events and we don't charge them for anything for doing so? No. But they have a time limit, either two or three weeks maximum, because we, I'd have to take a look at this so that I wouldn't be mistaken, and after that, well, you know, we're considering new requests. I think that we're making use of this available space to advertise existing or timely activities. Their purpose is to promote their activities. Fine then. Fine? Well, fine then. Well, we do have a resolution before us. Could you please read it, Mr. Bouchard? The committee of the hall recommends the town council to authorize the installation of permanent signage that would be unilingual Francophone on the right of Caron Street to advertise the Optimists Club of Rockland, and that the committee of the hall requests that the town council exempt the Optimists Club from any fees to be paid for that particular privilege for a total amount of $303. Seconded by Councilor Levert. Any questions? Well, are there many organizations that are incorporated that we're dealing with? Because there are a lot of subcommittees that go through you, you know, to organize certain activities, right? That apply for grants? Well, we're incorporated on a provincial basis, but also on an international basis. I understand. But are there any organizations that will go through you to request grants because they're not incorporated? To my knowledge, in the past 12 or 13 years now, we've requested the city of Rockland, we've made a request to obtain funds for the water park, we obtained $75,000 from the Trillium Foundation here in Ontario. To my knowledge, that's the only request that was made in that regard. I know that the Bourgette Optimists Club is tapped into by many organizations to obtain grants because they're incorporated. I believe that in Clarence there is an Optimists Club, but, well, you know, those clubs, Optimists Club bring a lot to youngsters. I'm a member of one of the best Optimists Club around, the Saint Pascal de Belon Optimists Club. Well, yes, yes. You're saying this tongue-in-cheek, are you not, Mr. Mayor? Well, yes. Well, who's in favor? Who's in favor? Thank you then. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, should I say? Petitions and correspondence, requests for pride flag raising, Prescott-Russell, LGTBQ plus Allies Group. Mr. Bouchard? There's no resolution to be read with regard to this, Mr. Mayor. Well, I think that we should, of course, raise the LGTBQ plus Allies Group flag, it's only a right to do so. There are only five flag-raising events throughout the day, or throughout the year here in Clarence and Rockland. Well, we'll also have the governor, we'll be hosting the governor general next week, so there'll be another flag-raising event that can be added onto our agenda. So, fine. Well, I think that definitely, definitely, we should go ahead with this event and vote in favor. Notice of motion, Mr. Zandt? Would you care to read your notice of motion? That's item 6.1. Just give me a moment, because my computer's a bit slow here tonight. Mr. Mayor? Here it comes. Do I have to read the title of the motion? Well, notice of motion presented by Councilor Mario Zandt and seconded by Councilor Don Bouchard, asking the provincial and federal governments to establish a committee regarding floods, whereas the integrated management of the principal reservoirs of the Ottawa River basin is the responsibility of the Ottawa River Regulation Planning Board? I'm sorry, I was tongue-twisted there. And whereas the health and safety of people living along the banks of the Ottawa River is of critical importance, and whereas the floods that occurred in 2017 and again in 2019 are unusual events, and whereas the climate conditions that precipitated these events were not identical in these two years, be it resolved that municipal council hereby asks the provincial and federal governments to establish a committee for the purpose of understanding what were the conditions that precipitated these floods in order to create management tools for the Ottawa River basin, and be it further resolved that this committee be established as soon as possible in order to ensure that these events won't happen in the future. I'll second this. That's already been seconded by Councilor Bouchard. I'd like to thank, by the way, Mr. Voisin for this initiative. We'd already spoken of this in previous special meetings that we attended, and it's very important to understand that there's something happening with the dams built along the course of the Ottawa River, because I don't believe this year that the snow did not melt any faster this year than in previous years in the 1980s. And before provinces start shelling out hundreds of thousands of dollars to purchase properties to have people move to another individual, we should take a look at this situation and take action. Fine? This is simply a notice of motion, by the way, Mr. Mayor, there's no discussion on this motion. I thought you were calling for a vote. Item 6.2, Mr. LaLonde. Whereas a number of residents of the city of Clarence and Rockland are affected by the recent spring flooding, and whereas many of them will face major cleaning and renovations as a result of these floods, be it resolved that council mandates the administration to establish a list of addresses that will comprise of all properties affected by the floods within the limits of the city of Clarence and Rockland, and be it further resolved that council mandates the administration to take the necessary measures to ensure that the residents of the affected properties included on the list be exempt from all fees to bring their waste and materials to the city's landfill site until July 31, 2019, of course, upon presentation of proof of residence. Up and including July 31, 2019. Miss, I know you'd like to make a presentation to council before we go on and vote on this. Good evening. My name is Monica Seguin. I'm going to speak in English because it's more comfortable in English, but you can certainly answer in French or ask me any questions in French if you wish. Your address, ma'am?
And I own a cottage at 2919 Old Highway 17. In regards to the 6.2, the motion for the waiving of the landfill site fees, I'd like to thank council for considering these motions today. It's important for families that have been affected by the floods to be able to move forward and have the support of the town to make whatever decisions they find appropriate for their, for their locations. I would like to comment, though, that I'm in a situation that the planning department's aware of and my councillor is aware of, in that my family has decided to demolish our structure. We have been at our site, we are original owners, we've been there since 1955, and so for over 60-some years, the river has not acted the way it has in the last two years. I was lucky and now unlucky that I took over the cottage in 2016 and have gone through two consecutive floods. And so in relation to the waiving of the landfill site fees, I would just like to ask that the council consider that you don't put a hard date of July 31 on it. In relation to my situation, I may not have rezoning or my plan going forward resolved, and so I don't feel comfortable, let's say, completely demolishing until that's dealt with, because essentially I'll be left with nothing, and I may actually open a bigger can of worms for myself if I do that right away. And so I understand we want to try and clean properties up quickly, and I'm willing to do that, but I can't do everything. And so just consider that there may be individuals in situations like mine that would like, if the waiving of the fees is provided, that it's extended to cover circumstances like mine.
If we had a problem there on the 31st, couldn't we give her tickets to finish off just for her place?
Yeah, I think we're also going to be, Monday also, talking about our recovery plan, and some of that, those details will be discussed at that time as well. So I don't think that there's an issue with the July 31 data that I heard. Yeah.
So I just thought I'd bring that up, just because it's written in the resolution itself.
Yep. We would be able to provide the dump with a list of addresses of people affected, and then just let them do their, I mean, go whenever they needed to go, and as long as they show proof that they live at that address. Yeah, I understand the purpose of probably having a date so that we can manage this a little bit better and know when it's going to end, and I understand that, but I think for certain cases where people, they're not just removing sandbags or removing furniture that's been damaged, they're actually, and I'm really sorry to hear about that, by the way, I just think maybe we should just give the dump a list of addresses and let them do what they need to do.
But I think we should keep the date, but we should specify that for people who are demolishing the house, that they can have an extension.
There's, we have forms that you can fill, and you get a paper exempting you from cost. So we got that.
Mr. Mayor, I think, besides the family, on Monday, we will go through the different aspects of the recovery plan, some of that is electronics, some of that is sandbags, some of that is your household, like construction waste and that type of stuff.
But you're available on Monday, the son of a miss in Rockland, so.
Yeah, and if not, the homeowners that can't make it, we're going to make sure that they get the package, anyone's, and have all the information, so it's quite clear.
I'll stay standing, because you'll say the next motion, and then I'll have a question.
Okay.
Whereas a number of residents of the city of Clarence and Rockland were affected by the recent spring flooding, be it resolved that council authorizes that the residents of the properties affected by floods be exempt from all fees related to applications for demolition purposes, or permits, should I say, to be affected immediately, and be it further resolved that council mandates the administration to review the potential needs of the properties affected by the spring floods in order to prepare a report proposing options that will have to be considered in relation to the process for zoning bylaw, amendment applications, minor variance applications, or building permit applications. Seconded? Fine. Any questions? Fine, go ahead, ma'am, if you have any comments.
And I'm at 2919 Old Highway 17. So, like I said, the motions presented today are an important step for affected families to be able to move forward. For the demolition, I appreciate that the town has heard, I guess, situations that people are in difficult situations, and appreciate that the administration, I hope, will look at individual needs of families, because the need of my family will be different than the need of my neighbors, and it'll be different than the 111, I believe, families that are impacted. Some will decide to rebuild, some will decide to demolish, some will decide to potentially walk away. I think it's, I'm in a situation that it's a cottage, I will say I'm lucky compared to other residents that it is their primary household. At the same time, it's still painful because it's a place that my great-grandfather built, so it's emotionally hard. But for the motion regarding the demolition and the needs of the flood-impacted families with respect to rezoning or minor variances, I would just like to say I thank you for this motion. I look forward to working with the town to find a solution that's reasonable, since we've, as a family, have decided demolition. At this point, the zoning does not allow us any permissible use on our land, and so I want the council to hear that, because what it means is today the bylaws do not allow me to do anything on my land, other than, because we are deemed rural, to rebuild a house. And so I say that because I want you to think about that, whether that is actually responsible. In my opinion, it's not responsible to, for our situation, to allow zoning for a house. We're in the floodway, we're not in the flood zone, but we have a meter and a half of water on our property today, which is in our cottage, which was in our cottage. And so I'm making the responsible decision as a homeowner, as a cottage owner, that it's responsible for us to demolish our family heirloom, if you want to say. But given that, it's not clear, I've had discussions with the councillor and with the planning department, it's not clear today, but I want to work together to find a way that I can still use my patch of grass at the end of the day for what it was historically used for, which for us was a seasonal, a seasonal place. And so there's not really a question there, I think it's more just a commitment from my end and my family's end, and I hope a commitment from the town to help each and all of us through these situations as we work through them, whether it's rebuilding, rezoning, or demolishing. So, thank you.
Also, one other question was if that app could put a roulade mobile trailer on the property, so we're looking at that. We've already brought that to Maryup to see if it's possible, and if it is, well, we'll go ahead, but we have to look at all the possible things.
Yeah, but because it's a flood zone. Yeah, but because it's a flood zone, the conditions would, you know, the conditions would change. Now people should not finish a basement, I think that they should raise their house if they are...
Yeah, but I don't think that would help.
No, no, I know, but I mean, I know that, I know in Quebec, you know, they're putting some conditions, like if people rebuilt or fix it, they have to raise their houses, you know?
Well, I think now we have an elevation, don't we, Monsieur Leonard? Certain elevation to have to respect.
Yeah, that is correct, but I think each situation is a bit different, so like the resolution mentions that we will come back and we will provide a direction, and I think it's going to be on a case-by-case basis, and we'll look at each needs and where they are situated within those zones and how our policies apply. The issues at our policies are broad and they don't apply always to each individual property, right? So we'll try and incorporate that in our reports and see how we can...
Me and Monsieur Simon talked to Mediev, so she's aware, I think you've talked to Mediev also, so she's aware of it.
She's definitely aware, yeah, yeah.
But I think it should be some more clear directives anyway because like, I understand that we go case by case, but I mean, if the land is at a certain height, there should be some requirement if the, you know...
But it's just a notice of motion.
So that's something in their report, that should be, you know, specifically. So I can try case specifically. I have the survey and I know my elevation, and it's unrealistic, and honestly, from an insurance perspective, I've been told I get no insurance, and so it is impossible for someone to, even if they chose to rebuild, to consciously do that.
Well, that's why I think it's important to report that it's mentioned that if it is, you know, like, at the height, the level, the level is too low, it should be mentioned that we cannot...
Yeah, because first, it's case by case basis, so if the land deals with the assets and all the services that come in. We can deal with all the requirements, zoning and all the policies that are...
Because let's not forget, we have three houses that were built last year, and they weren't affected at all, and the elevation didn't really matter. One of them, do one listen, so they're okay. What's up with the pigeon being affected at the bottom?
So we have an idea, a good idea for elevation, which is good. We have a point of reference.
And I think, I won't necessarily speak on behalf of my neighbors, they're not here, but, you know, whether it's this flood or whether we find out what the reason for the floods are, or if we could even mitigate it, I don't want to be pessimistic, but it may happen again, and people need to have options because unfortunately, or fortunately, we built in 1955, there was no dam, the river wasn't where it is today, and so things have changed, and I'm just hoping that the planning department and the town will change the bylaws so that we're doing the right thing, like we want to stay, we want to still contribute to our little community, to the town of Rockland. When we're here in the summer, we buy everything here, you know, we pay our taxes, we do our due diligence, and to be able to stay as part of this community is important for me, but the way the bylaws are today, I can't, and so I've, so thank you for the motion.
You're up to the meeting on Monday night, and you might have more information.
Yes.
Thank you.
Question period, if anyone has any questions of town council, now's the time to ask your question or questions. You're, yes, 103 Pilon, Andres Arro, I'm down at the bottom of the hill, I'm the last one down there, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you for your help, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor attended and helped to carry sandbags to where they were needed, it was greatly appreciated. Let me tell you that there's a line in the motion that reflects necessarily our needs, potential needs for those properties that are impacted by the flood. Now this being said, I mentioned this during the course of the flooding, during the time in which we were putting in sandbags, there is a solution to my problem, Mr. Mayor, as well as my son's problem. You see, the road, the street, is not high enough. If it was to be elevated approximately two or three feet more, it would resolve all problems there. My son has no problem because he's built at 41.5 feet high. I have a basement, but it's a crawl, it's a seven-foot crawl space. Well, even if we were to raise the road, Monsieur Arro, your house would still be lower, but it did impact my entrance way. I could enter regularly in my home, but I'd have to go through my son's residence. But my suggestion here would be to modify my entrance and to ally it, if I might use that term, along with my son's entrance, and shorten the town's responsibility that it has over this piece of land by some fifty or so feet. There might be a possibility to build a roundabout around that area so that it would allow the shovel to come in or back up during the winter time. Well, you're talking about a very expensive project. Well, if we're to make use of gravel, it all depends. But my entrance might be backed up toward the hill and the roadway might be raised by some two or three feet, and if it floods over, well, then it floods over. But let me tell you, the lady earlier on mentioned the fact that the river does not belong where it belongs because when the Cariant Dam was built in 1963, well, let's not revisit that issue. Well, we're talking about levels, we're not talking about natural levels there, but these are fabricated or levels, you know? Mr. Simard, is Pigeon Street a private road or is it? Previously, when I had occasion to purchase it, it was a private road. We decided to pave it over and council decided that it needed to be paved in such a way that it would be paved if it was considered a roadway that was taken over by the municipality. Well, if we were to go through your son's property, we're going through private roadway or private property, and it, well, I would change the designation of my entrance and I would ally it to my son's property. Yes, but you'd have to proceed to a modification, yes, to a modification to the bylaw. The entrance to your son's residence is high enough, the onus is upon you to raise your, the road leading to your home. Well, I can't do so in coming years, I can't do so. But it's possible to circumvent this situation. Three feet high, if you're to raise that by some three feet, that would alleviate all problems and concerns I would have with regard to this. Well, we'll take a look into this. Thank you very much. That falls under the constraints of potential needs of those impacted by the flood. Thank you. Any other individuals that have any questions of town council before we proceed any further? Is this individual your legal counsel? Good evening, my name is Nancy Kelly and I represent the minor league baseball interests here in Clarence and Rockland, and I'm here to support the development of the baseball project here in Clarence and Creek. We've been talking about this project for many years now, and we cater on average to approximately 120 to 150 children's needs with regard to baseball. We cover all ages from four to 16 years of age. Now, for the past few years, we've been very limited in promoting our sport and activities because we don't have access to many baseball fields or hours. Children can only play in between certain hours. As things stand, the children have use of the baseball field two days out of seven. The baseball field otherwise is used by adults. Now, we started to talk about the situation to try and develop further interest. Clarence Creek is central for baseball activities because we draw the interest, we stir up interest from many individuals stemming from outlying communities to take part in baseball activities. We were asked to take part in provincial and district tournaments, but we don't have the infrastructure to host baseball tournaments here. We're trying to come up with a baseball field that would meet the specifications and needs of the Canadian Minor League Baseball Association. Provincial tournaments might, if we were to host a tournament of such a stature, we might certainly have seven to eight teams taking part in a province-wide activity or tournament, and certainly that would benefit our surrounding area businesses as well as hotel and motel facilities. But I just wanted to promote and encourage this project or the implementation of this project within our community. Thank you. Well, thank you very much for your comments, ma'am. Any other questions then? That's it? Thank you. Let's go on now to the report from the United Counties of Prescott and Russell. Well, there were two resignations or two retirements from retired directors, Louise Lalonde from the residents of Prescott Russell, as well as Michel Cretier, who was overseeing ambulance services, that's all I have to say as far as that goes. We're awaiting further developments with regard to the ambulance situation in the very near future. Let's go on now to committee and staff reports, item 9.1, Transportation Impact Study, Mr. Whereas the transportation impact study for the East West Collector was completed in December 2018, and whereas a condition must be modified under the Brugel and Morse Village Stage 5 draft approval, that Condition 26 of the Brugel file and Condition 29 of the Morse Village Stage 5 file be modified to read as follows: That Poupard Side Road, Bronze Avenue and Saint Jean Street be designed and built to municipal standards within an urban cross-section approved by the city. The design should follow the recommendation of the detailed transportation impact study that was completed by Castle Gen Consultants, December 2018, with any subsequent revisions if applicable. The design, the environmental studies, the EEA, the construction work, the project management fees, and any other studies or works required are to be paid by the development charges by law and the municipal budget in place for the current year. The estimated cost of the design and works to be completed must be approved by the city before any undertaking. Seconded by Council Zandt, any questions? I do have a question. I thought that the development was paying for those particular roadways. Why isn't the municipality called upon to pay for this? Well, I can field this, the answer to this question, and I can resort to a presentation because this question was raised at the last meeting, so I can proceed to a brief presentation. So, in effect, in effect, there are certain developments, certain infrastructure works whereupon the developer has entire responsibility over, and there are other developments where that is not the case. When we're talking about more than one development, then it's subject to different rules and conditions. You'll note that their report will be forwarded to council in the not-too-distant future that explains the parameters of all of this, what's considered, for example, as a local cost or cost to a developer, and what is considered as being a project that would wind up under the other regulations. That was not reflected in the first phase of the implementation of the plan that had been, that had been voted, and that will certainly shed light on what projects are admissible or not. All in all, that's all I had to say as far as that goes. Now, I believe that you do have my presentation on your individual computers, if you, some prefer to have a paper copy, then I'll supply you with a paper copy. No, that's fine. The cameraman hides the screen, more or less, so we'll have to resort to a different way of tackling your presentation. All right then. It's easier to do so if you follow the paper presentation. And the presentation is also projected on the screen, to my right, to your left. So firstly, there's information that's attached to the report. Now, I don't want to go too much in great length as to what's contained in this plan, but the end result or the end conclusions will explain what's what. If you don't mind, I'll explain things in English because there are some terms that are easier, applicable in English than in French with regard to this.
Really, the goal of this presentation is just to clarify a few of the, I think, the issues or the aspects that weren't well understood when we presented the report to amend the subdivision draft conditions for the Brugel subdivision and for the Morse Village subdivision. So early in 2018, the original draft conditions were presented to council, council approved those. There was an omission made where the Saint Jean Street wasn't identified, and so really what happens is that you have the Street Number 1, which is in Morse Village Phase 5, which is the main link to that subdivision, and you have Poupard Road, which is the main link for the Brugel subdivision. In between that is Saint Jean Street, and that was omitted from the original, the original draft recommendations or draft subdivision agreements. So the report that was brought two months ago was to rectify that and add Saint Jean, and at the same time, the study was complete, so we added the study to the report, and I think that's where generated a lot of questions and confusion. The report was quite technical and quite complicated. So through this presentation, we're hoping to address all those concerns. So the goal of the study, oh, sorry, I'm just gonna go down here. Unfortunately, I just noticed that it's not on PowerPoint, so I will have to use my mouse to drag this down. So the goal of the study was to identify the need for, to support the development of these two subdivisions, so Phase 5 of Morse Village and the Brugel subdivision, and what was the infrastructure or the need for the road to be able to support that. And so we looked at, so the study looked at a few goals, which were the traffic impact along these roadways, the need for a multi-use pathway, and a bunch of other considerations, the speed limit and all that stuff, the slope of Saint Jean Street. And so I know that there's a lot, or there's been a lot of questions or in a lot of, I guess, comments or concerns about the term or the usage of collector roads, major or minor in the past, so just gonna try to explain really, the only policy we currently have is in our official plan, and that is a overarching policy. It's not really specific or really precise, so this is how it's defined in the strategic, in the official plan. The department is going to bring back definition that is a lot more, a lot more precise, and is going to identify it a little bit better, what a major collector road is, what a minor collector road is, when is it, when is it appropriate to have a major or minor collector road. So, but in the official plan, this is how it's defined. So the goal is to distribute traffic from interior residential, so minor collectors and local roads, to an arterial road, so something like a county road or County Road 17, something like that. It's to be the most efficient from point A to point B. It's designed for, to accommodate 8,000 vehicles, minimum, it could accommodate more, and it's, it should be uninterrupted flow. So what that means is we should restrict or limit the amount of driveways that are directly along a collector road. Doesn't mean that, doesn't mean that it can't. Council ultimately has the right to decide or the ability to decide whether or not they want to allow this. What happens is that it creates operational issues, so those just need, that just needs to be considered when approving driveways along a collector road. So a collector road is to be as efficient as possible, you put driveways there, issues about backing up or, you know, then you start getting complaints about speed, you start getting complaints about too many vehicles on that road, and you put, so that's, that's the reason why the policy is developed that way. Then in a minor collector road, so again, it's similar to a major collector road, those are a bit more like... are a bit more like, a bit more to, within the subdivision often, major collector can be within a subdivision as well, but those are to normally connect into major collector roads. So, but that acts similarly to a minor collector, to a major collector road. So, the study looked at different horizons, five to 10-year, which is a short term, a short term, medium term, 10 to 20, and full build-out, and then identified how many units are developed, are going to, or plan to be developed within those, those two developments, within those two subdivisions. And ultimately, how many vehicles are considered or are expected with this development? So, which is, you can see, 2,000 units in the next five to 10 years, 3,100 units the next 10 to 20, full build-out, which is beyond 20 years, 3,900. These are additional, so the first is 2,000, then added on to that, for a total of 6,000 to 8,000 vehicles in the peak time. So, that link, just to support those developments, is gonna be a collector, a major collector road. Doesn't matter how we want to define it, that's what it's gonna end up being. And so, currently, the way that Poupaux Road is designed is that it outlets either to Laurier Street or to Carmen-Bergerein. Carmen-Bergerein has its issues in terms of its capacity to handle this amount of volume in the medium to long term. Carmen-Bergerein is sufficient for the short term, but as soon as you hit that 10-year, five to 10-year window, you're gonna end up having, we're gonna end up having issues. So, which is why we'll see at the end, in the proposed design, that, or proposed sketch that, you'll see that we're considering another alternate route, which is to bypass Carmen-Bergerein. So, again, use Poupaux, but then it will reach the Highway 17 further down. So, really, all this stuff is really, like, the next stuff is really technical, stuff that was taken out of the, out of the report itself. I don't think that there's much value in going through all of this, because really, you'll see on the map what this is. So, on this map here, you see the different intersections and their different proposed designs. So, within space builders, Stage 5, Morris Village, nothing's changed in terms of what the developer, what was agreed upon between the draft conditions with the developer, the width of the road, the right-of-way, everything is the same, and developers are all on board with the results of the study and proposed, I draft, the design. What's that?
Who's paying for that section?
This section here?
Yeah.
This is considered a DC, this is a DC project. It's eligible for DCs. I mean, ultimately, council decides which projects are recommended or on land list, but it's eligible for DC funding.
In Ottawa, usually, you know, the city cooperates the building of the roads, and then you have everybody build around it, right? So, that's usually it's paid for by the developers and the city.
City of Ottawa uses the same mechanisms as we do.
That's what I'm asking, maybe elaborating on that.
Yeah, so, like, they would have the same process where they'd have DCs. It depends, it oftentimes depends on how the development is advancing, which stages the development are advancing. Sometimes it's beneficial for the city to advance some things, sometimes it's beneficial for the developers. Most cases, it's the developer that advances the projects, and then parts of that is covered through the DC's bylaws. So, so in this case, all of these, all of these roads are subject to that, and are candidates for that. You have this road here, which is Sterling, which would extend to, this is, this will be considered a minor collector road. You have the road that's named as Street Number 1 now, this is gonna be a minor collector. These are both gonna be two lanes, just your typical two-lane road, but it's gonna be 26 meters in width. And then you have Saint-Jean Street from Dr. Carbay to Street Number 1, which is going to be a two-lane, sorry, two-lane as well, but it's, it's currently what you would consider a rural road and is now going to be converted to a urban road. So, the, in terms of, in terms of the amount of lanes, it's gonna be the same, it's just there's gonna be sidewalks and that type of stuff, so it'll be more of a, more of a urban road. But so, this is two lanes. And then this section here, Saint-Jean, where meets the Street Number 1, which is just down at that curvy section, that's gonna be a four-lane, non-divided. And then, past Point C here, on Poupaux Road, right where Brégil Development is gonna be, that's gonna be a four-lane divided. So, that's similar to what Dr. Carbay has, a medium right down the middle, and so that's very common for major collector roads. So, this part here is considered a major collector road because of the development that's gonna occur in Space, in Phase 5, and because of the development that's gonna occur along Brégil, along that road, all of that traffic to support those two developments are gonna funnel onto that road, whether we want it or not, like, that's just the way that the development is gonna occur. And so, this road needs to be brought up to that level, which is a major collector road. Short term, like I was explaining, going down Poupaux Road to Carmen-Bergerein, and then this set of lights that are here, eventually that is going to become an issue, and what's proposed is future extension through this area and connect further down on 17, County Road 17. And so, I know that there's also been some, some questions or some discussions about East-West Collector and whether or not this is an East-West Collector. And so, a lot of this depends on whether or not the Highway 17 is gonna get widened. So, if the white, if the 17 widens up, this suffices in terms of directing traffic to the appropriate location. If the Highway 17, if there's a possibility the Highway 17 doesn't widen, then the city needs to consider an alternative, because we're no longer, we're no longer gonna have some issues directing traffic, even though we do an extension here at this point, you still have the same bottleneck, which is the Highway 17, and at some point, we're gonna have to consider alternate ways of getting to Ottawa. And that's where, which is, which is way past the 20-year horizon, where we were considering something that would be further south of this development. So, that doesn't preclude that, like, that, that would still be considered moving forward, but there are some, some considerations, it depends on Highway 17, it depends on how the development occurs. In the immediate development, this would suffice for the development purposes.
You already know where I stand on this certain thing, so I'm not gonna go into it again. I personally do not think that Carmen-Bergerein could handle any more than it's handling now. So, I would, I would, and I understand that this is most likely gonna be at our cost, so we're looking at the extension to the highway. You're absolutely right about the widening of the highway, but it doesn't change the fact that we're, at some point, we're gonna have to start funneling out this traffic into where it needs to go versus trying to bottleneck it in. Carmen-Bergerein, we already know can handle it. Even right now, it'll take me five minutes to get out of a Walmart parking lot, just waiting, because there's people coming out of Boston Pizza, LCBO, like, it's non-stop, and that doesn't even have any developments built yet. So, I'll leave that safe, but my personal opinion, we should build that before anything even starts being built, kind of like, you know, and I compare to Ottawa, but honestly, it's more evident when you actually go up to, I think it's 10th Line, this was years ago, you get to a certain point, there was a round point, there was nothing built, but there were roads all laid out, just waiting for things to come up.
No, no, 10th Line didn't, didn't finish a road until it was built.
Well, when I went there, there was a round point with roads leaving, they were paved, Helen, you know what I'm talking about. So, I think it's important to start building these things before the infrastructure comes. We already know that they're gonna be building. So, that, that's my thing there. On the other end, near Cavo, I, the, I'm assuming the A, Bs, and Cs, and those are round points, right? Small point.
So, these, yeah, so, so these are roundabouts.
Roundabout, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So, are we wanting to put one at Cavo and Street 1 eventually?
Yes.
Because it, okay, so it's not on the map. We had talked about the gray area there and how that land is not owned by anyone.
Yeah.
What's our plan to connect that to prevent traffic going through the downtown area?
So, well, so that is, I mean, just like the extension part here, that we, city does not own, it's the same process. So, in terms of long-term planning, that is something that is often done, so through our master servicing studies, through our DCs within a five areas where we need to expand the, the infrastructure to be able to accommodate. So, I mean, that is going to be an issue, and that needs to be, that needs to be done, regardless of, like, the development's gonna occur no matter what, and that needs to be done. So, it's, it's not like if, it's not like if this needs to happen before the development.
You don't, you don't think so, no?
Well, because, because you have, like, in the study, the way, the way that was identified is that, and the way this is done is that we identify all the risks and all the development that's gonna potentially occur, and the timing for that. So, we know that Carmen-Bergerein, I agree with you that that is an issue, so Carmen-Bergerein specifically is an issue. However, it was identified that five to 10 years, Carmen-Bergerein is still sufficient to be able to take on the traffic that's going to realistically occur, because by the time that this development, the subdivision agreement is in place, by the time they start developing, by the time, you're, you're looking at five to 10 years, right? So, the, there won't be an immediate impact on Carmen-Bergerein, but that means that we still need to be planning, and through the DC process, which is what these extensions are included in there, the cost to do that, so that when we do get to the point where we need five years, 10 years from now, and we do need to extend that, the costs have been considered in the DC process. So, all of these are included in there.
Okay, and that is your recommendation to do, that I'm just worried that we're not going to be trying to do it quick enough.
Like I said, like, so...
I guess one, my question is, let's say we're talking about the Poupaux development, what ideally is your situation of how many units should be built prior to us building the extensions?
Well, it's...
Well, let's actually talk about the other one first, because that's a Poupaux development.
Yeah, well, so, like, so the study had identified how many units that would be developed in that timeframe. So, that is, that is based on consultation with developers, so they've been part of this process, this is what they realistically expect. And so, the widening or the extension is based on that as well. So, we don't expect that they're gonna be building more than 2,000 units in the first five to 10 years in Carmen-Bergerein, and that, and really, they're probably going, you're gonna hit that level more towards the end of the 10-year, 10-year window. So, Carmen-Bergerein is going to be sufficient for that time period, right? It's once you get that development that you then end up need to consider other alternatives. So, between this, signing this, and 10 years, the city is then working towards making sure that these are included in the DC process, that, that the money's collected to go towards those projects, and then that whenever needs to occur is, has occurred.
Do you want? Does that mean, uh, the part there from where Poupaux and Saint-Jean starts going down the hill in Saint-Jean, are we gonna be losing that, are we, this is gonna become a city street instead of the...
Yeah, urban first, or...
Yeah, so it will be ours instead of the United Counties of Prescott-Russell.
So, it doesn't mean that they're gonna transfer the road to us, it just means that that road needs to be built to support our development, right? It's still a county road.
Money from them.
Okay.
We can draw it.
I'll leave that one up to you, Mr. Hare.
Are you sure that's a blue, that's a green, Dan Alexanis?
No. Now, will this be done this year?
What's happening immediately is, so we did the study, then what happens is, we have to finalize the design. These are just recommendations, so it's just a sketch, it's just an idea of how this would look, the roundabouts, those aren't, those aren't, they're not permanent, or they're not...
Because, because, what's, what's...
Well, you see, I have difficulty in understanding really the reasoning behind all of this. We want to funnel the traffic towards Poupaux and Saint-Jean. We want to funnel the traffic southward. However, we're funneling the traffic in small side streets, like Carmen-Bergerein, for example, and the other street that was mentioned previously. So, we're not, we're not solving this situation, we're just having people make a detour so they might drive up northward. So, I'm not sure... So, we'd be widening some areas in four lanes, and then other areas, two lanes, and then one lane?
Just like, just like the roads that you'd identified in Orleans, is that you wouldn't normally build this to the full build-out right away. So, for some infrastructure roads, for example, you could build two lanes. You'd build two lanes for the medium, for the section where you have four lanes in the medium. And when the, when the development is triggered, when you get to that trigger point where you now have the amount of vehicles that would trigger four lanes, you build in the four lanes.
Okay, so it's that, so...
It's phased out.
Okay, okay.
And you're collecting DCs throughout this process so that you're, so that you have...
Okay, because I, to me, it didn't make sense to go to that extent, to exterminate to four lanes, and not going anywhere after.
Yeah, I know, so, like, what I was saying, though, is that the development is really planned between, so in the short term, it's five to 10 years, and you're really only gonna see a lot of development occurring in the later part of that. So, you wouldn't build four lanes tomorrow for a development that's not occurring.
I'm surprised that they didn't use baseline, and they didn't turn baseline into four lane, because that would be the, that would be the part of where to go, because eventually, if we make arrangements, we can finally convince Ottawa to connect in a slope to baseline, it would be...
So, again, like what I was mentioning, is that that's something that's more, more long-term, in terms of to be able to bring traffic outside of Rockland in its entirety. But nonetheless, you still need this to support the development that's occurring right within our municipality, right, which is occurring on Poupaux Road, and that's occurring, Space Builders, Builders 5, Stage 5, right? So, regardless of what, what that would look like, the, the, another east-west collector south of Rockland, you still need to do this to support the immediate development that's gonna occur.
So, from the, from the, the roundabout, from the D to A, so including Poupaux and part of Saint-Jean, how many developers own those lots?
So, you have, you have two developers, you have...
Only two, so on both sides, all on the...
So, you have Space Builders on one side of that, so east of that, and then you have Brégil that owns the south and north part of that Poupaux Road.
South of Poupaux.
Yes, some, a few, a few people, like, south by...
Single-family dwellings.
That are, that are along that road, but the majority is the developer that owns Brégil on both sides.
So, even though it's mostly owned only by two developers, it cannot make a deal between themselves and divide?
Well, so, because it supports, sorry, so it supports, so in terms of this, it depends on how many, how much of the development is supported. So, a part of this is local traffic, so when you look at the DCs and all that, and a prioritize local, local traffic, and that's city cost, that's excluded from, from the DCs. Part of it is, developers have the local roads and the asset, or the infrastructure that's considered local, and that is really for the development. So, all the interior roads, all that stuff, that's all the developers' cost, sidewalks to the interior roads, water mains, all that stuff is all the developers' cost. The only cost that is subject for the DCs is that, that road itself, because it supports a lot more than just that development. You need that to support the immediate development that's gonna occur there, but supports development that's, that's, that's already occurred, so in Morris Village, other phases, supports development...
Did we do the same thing for Dr. Corbay? Was it the development charges who paid for that, or it was a developer?
I, I don't recall what was included in the original development charge, I don't know if you have any...
It was not, so, at the time, City of New York, Rockland hadn't fully got a grasp on what was developed, or what not, and certainly, council of the day had the choice whether to include a road or not. So, that road was built by space builders and predominantly benefited that existing area. This particular road will benefit more than just the houses that are gonna be built there. And you can think of it this way, like, if we build a four-lane boulevard like Dr. Corbay, the first two lanes are what we call local, a local road, because if you only build that development, you don't need two lanes, but we know other people are gonna feed into it. So, the oversizing cost are lanes three and four, which is what is then collected through the development charges. That makes sense?
Yeah, but eventually, when baseline would be finished, when it would be completed, if it goes and connects with Ottawa, people would not be, would people would not be using that, that road to go back up the Highway 17?
Well...
They would go on baseline, and it would be more direct?
So, so, no, in the sense that people are gonna use the quickest means to get to where they wanna go.
Always.
So, development, that's gonna occur south of this, because the urban area has been expanded to baseline road. So, there is going to continue to have development south of this, at this point. Those, that development is probably going to take something like East-West Collector that's south, maybe baseline, a long baseline or something like that. But the, the houses that are gonna be developed right on Poupaux Road are not going to make that detour, especially if you have this extension that accommodates that, that traffic. They're gonna go to, however they get to 17 the quickest, and that is the quickest way for them to do that. way for them to do that.
Well, if you take a look at the traffic on Cottle Street, there are three sets of traffic lights. If I take a look at the contents of Schedule B...
So it doesn't matter in terms of a roundabout or a signaled traffic intersection? They're essentially the same thing. It just depends on, one, service is one, one need, so roundabouts are more efficient in terms of traffic moving through and all that stuff, it reduces speeds better than an intersection, but they require more lands. So this is just one concept. When we do the actual design and we go through, we're going to have to do IDA, when we go through that phase, we have to present at least three options. And then one is the preferred option, one is, and the other options that were considered. And at that time, we're going to better identify whatever we're going to do specifically for that intersection. So this is a bit higher up, so this is just a concept.
But including on Cottle Street as well, that's my concern is Cottle Street right now?
All of them? All of them are going to be considered at a more defined level once we get to that phase.
The second question I have is, are we going to be doing anything about the names of all these thousands of streets that we have here? Like to make it make sense, like in the sense, like what would, the theory of making things logical is you would have Saint-Jean Street that would end at roundabout D, and then Street One on the other side, so that's fine if you have three this way. And then from the other side of D, well, that should be Poupard Street that goes all the way until the end there.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
And then from roundabout C, then in theory, the rest of that street should just be Fidale Street, which is on both sides there. That's making it logic. I hate being in Ottawa where you have this street that changes names four times.
That changes names seven times, the same street. It's just absolutely illogical. And to see here this puzzle just seems like a Mickey Mouse project to me.
Normally, when we do the draft conditions or the conditions of the subdivisions, we're a bit too early in the phase, we then present the developer, present what their scheme for naming names are, we have convention, we have, it has to meet certain standards and all that. And through that process, we identify what's the best way of naming these streets, if the streets need to be continued, the naming needs to be continued. In this case, if Saint-Jean needs to be renamed, that is something that would be considered at that time. Because Saint-Jean would be like in three pieces here, which is, you know... Yeah, no, yeah, I understand that.
Certainly, in the Council's prerogative to look at the names in convention. Certainly, in the city of Ottawa, the roads that we struggle with were created through former boundaries and municipalities. So the former municipality of Napean actually extended well into Ottawa, so when Wellington changes to Richmond, Richmond, where it changes, it used to be Napean. And then Napean was annexed off, so there's a lot of history along that road why it changes seven times.
To Wellington, to Ridon, to Montreal.
And certainly, amalgamation in the city of Ottawa, there was a huge challenge to get duplicate names removed and sort some of that out. And they discussed renaming it one road, and that didn't pass, but that's where it becomes your option to deal with that.
I'd like to address the roundabout problems versus the streetlights, streetlights that have been alluded to. I think we really need to define what's best for the intersection, because let's not forget that a roundabout is designed in such a way that traffic flow flows equally on all sides. There are certain intersections that won't follow that rule, and it might be wise for you to address this later on. There's also a stretch of approximately 1.4 kilometers, give or take, that leads on to Highway 17, and you're saying that this would be eligible for development charges? Well, yes, all of this particular section is part, a parcel of that stretch of roadway that will support development. Well, we're talking about 1.4 kilometers worth of roadway that we need to purchase to implement this plan. We're talking about millions and dollars, millions and millions of dollars of infrastructure cost that will allow us to go ahead. It's very expensive, as propositions go, it's going to take up a major capacity of our DC charges for the foreseeable futures if we stick to that price, because we're creating a roadway, really. Well, I don't think so, I don't think we'll be creating a roadway. What we're really stepping into, onto unknown footing here. This is part and parcel of the capital expenditure project scheme, and I think we'll be implementing this around the 6th of June, but I don't want to venture too many comments as far as that goes. Well, I'm thinking of Ottawa when they worked on Brian Colburn. They said that's where the road is going to be built, is going to eventually be a four-liner, that's what you want to do this. We have to come to an agreement that Ottawa is a much bigger urban center than we are, and we're not talking about here 200 universal units that go by there in the Ottawa situation, but we're talking about 8,000 to 10,000 residential units. We'll be called upon to expropriate a whole bunch of people in this particular instance to be able to build a four-liner around that area that you're alluding to, to be able to build a 1.4-kilometer stretch of roadway. I think we're talking about a lot of money here. Mr. Sima, it's a lot of money, but it won't be done if there's no development. Development charges will allow homes to be built at the end of 10 years. It's going to take us a while. If you take a look at the report that we've just received, the construction report, take a look at 200 units at the very maximum that'll be built on a yearly basis, it'll take us quite a while to reach that peak, that level. And the builders are not sold out in the available space that they have to sell. Maybe in 10 years, it might be the situation, but not now. So we won't be spending an out of money, but we'll be taking in a lot of DC charges, that's all development charges. Mr. Carderelli? Well, this roadway will certainly impact a number of my residents in the near future. Now, to appease or calm things down, Mr. Mayor, and this is just a concept at this point in time, right? This is just a concept that you're referring to? Well, the concept that is to be developed, well, the roundabouts intersections, the way in which they're going to be built, are we going to be proceeding to conventional signage? Or are we going to be proceeding to the building of roundabouts? The width, number of lanes? The study determined that this is the need that we need, that had to be met. Well, I know that if we don't go ahead, that no matter what, cars are going to pass on that street to get to the highway. That's quite simple, that's what the existing infrastructure is that we have to work with to get to that point. But with regard to the future concepts that we'll need to implement, that comes along with the different options that are attached to this, I'm just trying to say that this is not a final, final solution. Well, this gives you a pretty precise idea as to what we need to implement, we're at the very beginning of the process, but that's a recommendation stemming from our consultant that had occasion to identify all of the aspects of these particular developments, traffic flow, the best way to get to Highway 17. That's the study that was commissioned, that we paid for, to ensure that we wouldn't favor more one side than the other. But if it only benefits the developer, why is this included in development charges? Well, you see, Sterling Street, for example, if you, I can understand Street Number One, because it continues on the east-west line that's already been built, but I don't understand what Sterling Street, what part it plays in all of this. Well, as I mentioned, we'll come up with council with definitions as to what considered, what cannot be considered, given circumstances that we'll have to tackle then. Because if I take a look at the Sterling Street proposal, the beginning of Sterling, where it's all been developed, who has paid for that section that has been developed? Probably the developer was called upon to pay for this. Well, I believe the developer paid for this as to the beginning of Sterling, the extension for reconstruction as far as Saint-Joseph Street goes, I believe the city of Clarence and Rockland paid for that or part of it in any event. So it's a similar type situation, really. Your traffic, you have traffic from Saint-Joseph that goes down to Sterling and Sterling that goes down to somewhere else. So we're not talking about immediate development, no. A major part of it might be implemented, but not all of it in its entirety. Fine, that's it then. Well, thank you, Mr. Leonard. Fine, thank you then. All those in favor? Thank you. Let's go back to the agenda, amendment to draft plan conditions, Bourgogne-Leving subdivision, whereas the council through a resolution adopted a series of 16 or 76 conditions in regard to the subdivision project of Bourgogne-Leving for part of Law 21, Concession 10, Russell Road, Chinny on February the 4th, 2019, and whereas, hold on, oh yes, whereas on March 27th, 2019, County Council approved the minutes of the March 13th, 2019 Public Works Committee meeting in regards to a Chinny pedestrian crossing, and whereas it was resolved to impose the installation of the pedestrian crossing as a condition to the subdivision agreement for the proposed subdivision south of County Road 2 in Chinny, and whereas Section 51, Sub 44 of the Planning Act, LRO 1990, Chapter P13, Municipal Council can, at its discretion, modify the conditions of approval that the committee recommends that Municipal Council approves the following additional condition for the draft plan of subdivision submitted by La Salle Engineering and Associates Limited for Development Bourgogne-Leving Developments Incorporated, file number D12-DVVV-02.
To design and install a pedestrian crossing treatment on County Road 2 in Chinny, this pedestrian crossing treatment will consist of a pedestrian crossover Level 2 Type B intersection two-way, as per the Ontario Traffic Manual book fitting. The design shall be submitted to the Director of Infrastructure and Planning and the Public Works Department of the United Counties of Prescott and Russell for their review and approval as part of the subdivision approval. The design, purchase, and installation of this device shall be at the developer's cost. As such, the UCPR will require 100% of the cost estimate via later of credit to be added to the subdivision agreement. The owner would need to obtain a WCA permit from the UCPR prior to the installation of the pedestrian crossing treatment.
Seconded by, Councilor Lallande. First, this is not what I asked for initially, when it was brought initially to the committee's attention, I don't think that developers should be called upon to pay... Of Prescott and Russell, that's why, you see? Because this changed hands from Mr. Clermont to Jeremy. Jeremy sat down 100% to core contractors, but I told Jeremy that this was not the agreement that we arrived at in between Jeremy and myself, that's why I would ask that this be brought to the attention of the next roads, to the attention of the next Roads Committee meeting members of the United Counties of Prescott-Russell. Maybe our folks will be called upon to cross that area to have access to the park, so I would like that this be deferred. Well, I second that, I second that this be deferred then, we might look into this splitting of costs. Thank you, all those in favor? Carried then, that's fine. Thank you. Let's go on to the next item, condominium conversion, 535-445-Chinny, Mr. Levaire, that the Committee of the Hall recommends to council that it adopt bylaw 2019-50 to exempt from the plan of subdivision approval process the condominium's description of the subject property of 1847305, Ontario Inc., located at 535-545-Russell Road, and that the mayor and the clerk be authorized to sign the appropriate certificate. Seconded by Councilor Sima. Questions, all those in favor then? Carried, thank you. Request for additional funding, Clarence Creek Baseball Field, Mr. Lallande, whereas a 2019 capital budget for the construction of the Clarence Creek Baseball Field is $150,000, and whereas the bids for the construction of the Clarence Creek Baseball Field are much higher than anticipated, be it resolved that the Committee of the Hall recommends to Municipal Council to authorize a transfer of $21,141 from the federal gas tag funds to the Clarence Creek Baseball Field construction project as recommended. Seconded by, Councilor Levaire. Any questions? Yes, Councilor Sima. How many baseball fields are drained at present that we're managing? Well, there's a baseball field in St. Pascal as a part of the Rockland baseball field, that's about it, and we're asked to have the complete field drain? No, not completely. If you take a look at the results of the tenders we received, it's much schmier than the budget that was allocated, so we removed a bit of drainage provision in the outfield. We don't believe that it's necessary to have all of the drainage offered there, and we lowered the width or decreased the width of the cover material there. We tried to fall within the constraints of the budgets that were given to us to administer. That's why we're asking, however, we were not able to make ends meet, that's why we're asking for an additional $21,000. Any other questions then? All those in favor? I'd like to have a, see all hands raised, please, or none? Fine, carried then. That's fine, as long as they ask politely, that's fine. Great. Let's go on to the annual repayment limit, Ms. Chouagnier. I move that report number FIN 2019-015 be received as information. Seconded by Councilor Zant. Any questions, all those in favor? Carried then, thank you. Next item on the agenda, improvements to the security system, doors, alarms, and cameras. Mr. Carderelli, that the Committee of the Hall recommends that council approves the removal of the Clarence Creek server room fire extinguishing system project from the 2019 capital projects list, and that the Committee of the Hall recommends that council approves the addition of a project to make significant improvements to the security system with a budget of $25,000. Seconded by Councilor Zant. Questions, Councilor Zant? Mr. Cousineau? You were not with us at the time in which we entered into budgetary talks, but if I recall, the inspection system was something that was quite important with the municipality. At that time, they asked for money to implement this project, it was a risky situation then. What made it so that this is not a pressing matter right now? Well, a few events impacted the situation. So we approved in 2018 to proceed with work on the town hall system this year, and for this year, to perform additional work here in Clarence. Now, those two server rooms safeguard one and the other. Everything that we do here in Rockland is saved here once per hour if something happens in Rockland and vice versa. There are not as many people that work here. That was the first thing that compelled us to say the following, you know, we implemented a risk assessment situation, and I did so with all capital expenditure programs that we were asked to look into. Now, worst-case scenario would be that if something would happen at the server room at the very last hour of their work shift, let me tell you that I was involved with organizations that have less redundancy than this, less risk aversion than this. And the other thing is, this is that we finally installed the service in Rockland, and it's a bit different than what we'd imagined it would be. The one that was ordered when it was installed, we were told by the guys that installed it, you know, it's going to safeguard the data on your servers if ever there's a fire that does occur. It's like an airbag, if you wish, in a car that goes boom, you know, that dampens all risk of fire that might occur, it caused damage, of course, or auxiliary damage. So when we took a look at the damages that might be caused by this, would the balance be tipped in our favor? Now, given the fact that we'd asked that the fund be transferred... Now, given the fact that we'd asked that the fund be transferred to another project, it wouldn't make much sense to proceed with this project at this point in time. I can tell you that our servers are very, very secure. The investment that was put into safeguarding system was well thought out. And theoretically, that one serve as a backup to the other and vice versa. It was a very good idea. But at present, this particular server is considered as a backup system more than anything. So we're going to keep the fire chief here. So if there's a fire right here, he's not moving to Rockland. He doesn't know it yet, but surprise! Surprise, surprise! All those in favor? Oh my, my! Oh my! All those in favor? All right. Well, we woke Mr. Sima up. We managed to do that. Fine. Let's go on now to the Smart City Initiative. Signed protocol. Councilor Sima. Thank you, well, now that he's up. Now that he's up and about. That the committee of the hall recommends that report number IMIT 2019-004 be received as information. Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Zant. Any questions, Councilor Zant? A quickie, Mr. Mayor. A quickie, Mr. Mayor. Okay, well, I love your choice of words, Councilor Zant, as always. You have a way with words. I stand corrected.
We've had conversations about the initiative Smart City before, and I'm all for it. However, I've been contacted by someone that has an issue with that, and I don't know if council has already thought this through. In this agreement, it states that Smart City will have exclusive rights to city assets for similar services. We already have a contract with a company to supply Wi-Fi through country Wi-Fi. What exactly does this mean for the contract we currently have? And does this new contract nullify any future contracts that we have with local businesses versus bringing in someone from outside to do something? I just want to make sure we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Rs.
Yeah, that specific, he contacted me, and I hadn't given him an answer yet, because it would be a council decision. But the specific referral to city assets does not mean that they will be there providing all the services we have. And certainly, the company or the consortium is very willing to work with us, and grandfathering or leaving existing contracts in place would be possible.
Okay, so when we talk about city assets, I'm thinking of, you know, let's say the water tower, or any other kind of tower that has, that's being used by Wi-Fi. Currently, we allow other Wi-Fi companies to use that water tower. So I'm just, I'm curious as to making sure. You have to understand, we have a local business that wants to get off the ground and supply service. I want to make sure that whatever we bring in isn't messing up the agreements and preventing them from being settled in the business that they're launching. So perhaps there could be some things, I don't know if, I talked to Mr. Sima earlier today. You know, one handled Rockland, the other one handled rural. So I just want to make sure that we're not stepping on anyone's feet. So please, just...
Yeah, if I can add to that, then, Mr. Mayor. When they talk about exclusive, I've been poring over the contracts now for a bit. When they talk about exclusive rights to city assets, they're talking about exclusive rights to assets that we are providing them. Like areas like to build out certain infrastructure that is required to do...
Keep this in the back of your mind as you progress through this. That country Wi-Fi does have a contract with the city to supply Wi-Fi?
They're not, the goal with them is not to create any kind of monopoly. It's to really open it up. The infrastructure they're looking at putting in place could actually create opportunities for other IT companies.
And so perhaps, I know you had mentioned you haven't had a chance to talk to him. I understand that you're swamped with other things as well. Would it be possible to just keep them in the loop just because they're the only ones that we have that have this type of agreement with us for this? Just keep them in the loop and let them know the progression of the contract to make sure they don't feel threatened?
Well, absolutely.
Thanks. That's it.
All those in favor? All those in favor? Let's go on to the construction monthly statistics, April 2019. Councilor Sima, that's your department. That the construction monthly statistics stemming from the construction department be received for information purposes. Seconded by Councilor Zant. All those in favor? Carry then. Other items. Do you have any announcements or questions for any department heads? Councilor Levav. I just have a minor question. In Hammond, in the new project there, the Tulip project that winds up at the soccer and the baseball field, there's a trail, a walkway that leads off of there. A lot of folks leave off by that way when an activity is over and done with, because there's not enough parking facility, of course, at that center. Now, when activities are over and done with, people exit by that way, and there's still traffic, car traffic going in by there. Not a ton of traffic, but still. Is there a way to come up with cited saying, you know, pedestrians only, or something like this? Or having yellow lines painted across the street to indicate that a lot of people cross by that way? Often, unaccompanied children, children or unaccompanied program travel by that way on bicycle and travel on the paved walkway there. Well, I'll have to follow up on what you're saying. We'll have to take a closer look at this. Is that not part and parcel of county-owned roadway? Or road networks? Well, you see, people might be able to get at the corner of that street, because otherwise, you know, you might get a ticket if you have occasion to cross those streets where you're not allowed to. A question here? Mr. Leonard. Now, with regard to county roads, we do have a sign put up indicates the speed at which a vehicle is allowed to travel at. Now, you're, I know you're jumping to conclusions here. Is it possible to verify or validate? I even went by there to test this out, to test this proposition out. It catches, when we go by there, we're caught a bit later. Once we've gone past the, this traffic flagging, or this speed flagging mechanism, the speed that we travel at is posted too late once we've gone by. Well, it's difficult for us to really gauge vehicles at the speed at which they travel at, at the variance at which they travel at. Do we have a Plan B then, to alleviate the situation? Because I imagine it might be a major problem, because it's a heavily traveled area. Well, there are many other things that we can't consider. It's one of the conditions is to move this traffic control mechanism to another area. I believe we had another report that was forwarded to council in 2018 or 2017 whereby different strategies would have been identified to reduce speed in that particular area. And we considered intrusive or less intrusive ways of reducing traffic flow or the speed of traffic flow there. I know that the spot at which this speed control mechanism is installed is not, well, the site is not the best. We might, it's not ideal. We might be called upon to move it to another location. Mrs. Chouagnier. There's a speed indicator also similar to that on Leban Street, and I believe it's very efficient, because we see the speed limit that is posted at 50. And if you don't speed down, your speed is immediately flashed at you. So by the time you go by the speed indicator, you have the time to lower your speed to 50 kilometers an hour. I've tested it four, five times, and it's just the right distance. So maybe that might be a guide for you to follow. Well, it's located, this one that you're alluding to is located on a county road. So the geography and the geometry at which this particular speed control mechanism is located, it might differ from the other one that we're referring to. There's also a tree that's located not far from there. Yes, there's a lot of factors that come into play. Councilor Zant. I just wanted to thank Mr. Wilson and all members of the bylaw enforcement officers for implementing the speeds by program. The speeds by mechanism was installed on Edwards Street. There were a lot of traffic-related or speed-related problems on Edwards North. Because of the flooding situation, it was put there, but there was no activity there, because everything was flooded out then. Could it be, could it be possible to reinstall the armadillo mechanism once water will have gone down? Because there are a lot of folks that make use of this for parking, as a parking facility, or, you know, for racing purposes. They're quite illegal. Oh, you're not involved in that, are you, sir? No, 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 of course. But I'd just like to be reinstalled.
So we can have an accurate picture of what's happening on Edwards.
Our hope is to move around the municipality, any sort of all our problem areas. Typically, we see our problem areas near schools or communities in the villages. So we'd like to try and move around, but certainly, yeah, we'll bring it back.
It's just we can't close that parking lot, because people start fishing at 4:00 in the morning. So, and there's no one in the city to open the parking lot. And people just hang out there all night long, and it's really disturbing the condos that are there. So, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Lallande? Last week, Mr. Denoyet, we hosted an auction for those properties that were put up for sale by the city of Clarence and Rockland. Will we obtain, will a report be forwarded to town council to make us aware of what happened? There were two properties that remain unsold. And take a look at the options that are presented to us with regards to those properties? You're not interested in purchasing any of those, Mr. Lallande? Well, I offered Mr. Mayor to purchase this for local business purposes, but no one seemed to be interested. Well, we'll come up with a report. The reason why it took a bit longer than I initially wished it would take, I want in this report to propose to all of you recommendations with regard to those particular properties that have, that remain unsold. The fact that they have not been sold as of yet compels you to take a decision as to what needs to be done with those properties. We have to take a look at those options that need to be considered and implemented with regard to those two properties. And towards the end of June there, I'll come up with a report for you, or consideration. Councilor Levav. The signage that are put up in villages that ask people to reduce their speed, some of those signage, of course, is owned by the United Counties of Prescott and Russell. We received an email by Robert Lallande, from Robert Lallande, saying that, well, this year they've all been taken up. Maybe next year? But I'm wonder, you know, that's the situation that, the one that's on La Croix Road, can it not be put somewhere else? But those, so that could better serve the purpose for which it was originally intended to? Well, the onus is upon the county to decide where it is to be placed. Well, this sign does not belong to the United Counties. However, no, I know it's not, but it stems from an agreement that has arrived at between us and the United Counties of Prescott, Russell. And those spots at which they are installed have been chosen also. We have to discuss as to where they will be moved or not. So I'll come up with a request, and there are a lot of trucks that come from the other side also, that are driven from the other side to this side, that contribute to the problem. Mr. Lallande? Mr. Mayor, I spoke of this particular situation to Mrs. Collier last year. Towards the end of the year, there's a resonant from my ward that spoke to me about septic-related, tank-related problems that he has. And a report that was commissioned stated that all neighboring properties had a similar problem. That's the developer did not make use of the proper sand material. Now, I'm going to forward the engineer's report along with Terry Young's decision that will influence the project, because it falls within the constraints of the seven-year guarantee. And I'll send it directly to the South Nation Chairperson, and I'll CC this report to you, and as well to Mrs. Collier. We pay an enormous amount of money, year in and year out, to the South Nation Conservation Authority to administer this drainage field. And we've warned them in August of last year that there was a problem. It was quite prevalent in that area, and they haven't done anything. And I think that we have to apply a bit of pressure to get things done. Fine, any other questions? Yes, adjournment? I'd like to thank Mr. Denoyet for his year-end report.
For all the hours and effort that was put into the floods this year. Our other directors supported us a great deal during the floods as well. And we didn't have everybody present on May 10th. So I just wanted to take a moment now to thank everybody for working so hard.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
All right then. Thank you very much. 1:00, 9:47 PM, adjournment is called.